Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Crabbe?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Brenton is absent.
Okay, well, with that then we'll have a report from the Planning Director.
Items here at the Board of Supervisors meeting on May 17th in Squaw Valley, the Gondola North rezoning was approved as well as Torrey Caldwell's rezoning application to allow for the single-family residents. And as far as upcoming board meetings, on June 22nd scheduled is the Sunset Industrial Area Plan Amendment that establishes the Communities Facilities District for funding of fire protection services in the Sunset Industrial Area, as well as the Miners Ridge Appeal. I'm not sure if everybody knows, we've received two appeals, one from Dr. Dale Smith and the other from Mario Ferrante on that project. So that'll be scheduled at the 22nd hearing. Upcoming Planning Commission items, June 10th Rancho del Oro Estates subdivision in the Granite Bay area and a road name change in the Tahoe Vista area. June 24th, right now it looks pretty full. We've got a map modification in Tahoe, the American Village Vineyard, American Vineyards Village is proposing a gate, a potential ADA Accessibility Standards Workshop, the MAC Procedure zoning text amendment and a zoning text amendment on temporary outdoor, temporary ag events and a modification zoning text amendment on the modification of sign amortization standards. And then in July, the Bohemia Project, Hen Ordnancy CTA, Dry Creek EIR Public Review Comment period on the transportation element for that community plan. So keep him busy.
Okay, good.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
All righty.
Okay, well now we have an opportunity for public comment, and I know we have at least one, this would be over any item that's not already on the agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Larry Kneidel. You want me to spell that? You need me to spell it? I just have a couple of questions, and if you can't answer the questions, maybe direct me on where I can get these questions answered. I get confused with all the boards and commissions and where to go. The Highway 49 streetscape master plan and Phase One implementation plan. I was wondering how many phases of this master plan are there and has Phase Two been developed or drafted? Or do you know where I can go to have that answered? I've been online and can't find it.
Okay, I guess I would defer to staff, Paul.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lee Lively, 1702 Tracy Lane. I have a brief statement concerning the Bohemia Project. To begin with, I would like to again express my disappointment that our county officials are even considering a project that would be so detrimental to our Auburn area. Aside from trashing the neighborhood, it is going to do serious damage to our local retail businesses as history proves in environment such, or communities such as ours. Again, also, I would respectfully request that because of the revision of the EIR in the traffic and circulation chapters and related impact areas, that the EIR be recirculated to give people an opportunity to make informed responses about the scope and content of this project. As you may know, our group of concerned citizens has embarked upon a communication project. Our mission is to notify affected residents about the potential danger of a Walmart in our community. We have begun by mailers. The first mailer went out a couple of weeks ago, the second mailer's coming out this week. Our distribution list is about three, three to five thousand residents in our area. The, our mission of communication is nothing more, as I said, than to notify affected citizens of their, of the potential danger. And also, I must add that our mission is to communicate the proceedings of our county officials as this project moves on. Our objective is very simple. It has to do with the Auburn Bowman Community Plan. If Mr. Conkey wanted to submit a project in compliance with Auburn Bowman Community Plan, he would have no objection from our side at all. But we will demand that Auburn Bowman be adhered to, and we will demand that SEQA be adhered to, specifically with request to the recirculation of the EIR. I have those comments in a letter to the Planning Commission. I've included the text of the first two mailers that are going out to, again, our affected citizens in our Auburn, North Auburn area. Now I would like to present that now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more public comments?
Hello, my name is Victoria Connolly, 223 Dairy Road, Auburn. I'm also a member of A-PACE, which is the group that has been organized to oppose the current plan development at the Bohemia site. Basically, we're concerned that we have 155,000 square foot building going up that has some major environmental and socioeconomic concerns associated with it, and we don't know who the tenant's going to be. And we think that if the tenant is going to be possibly Walmart, that that needs a separate analysis by planning and also consideration by yourselves, MAC, and the Board of Supervisors. Because Walmart really is a juggernaut that comes in and takes over communities, destroys businesses, kills jobs, and lowers wages and tax revenues. So I have prepared a letter with four different attachments for each of the members, also for Mr. Haas of Planning. And the attachments are an article about the Tom Rivers town in New Jersey, about they're shedding their tax base after Walmart came to town. Also, facts from the Walmart documentary called Walmart: The High Cost of Low Price. This has citations and scholarly studies supporting the assertions in the film. Also, a compilation of studies and information and articles from the Big Box Collaborative. And also, a certified copy of the, for publication of the Court of Appeal of the State of California, Bakersfield Citizens for Local Control versus City of Bakersfield in Panama, which notes and remands back for further EIR study due to the inadequate assessment of the decay, blight, and other socioeconomic issues associated with the Walmart coming to town. And I will close with this, that when I was canvassing the neighborhoods recently, I found a gentleman who lives at the corner of Dairy Road and one of the other streets that shoots up there, I can't recall the name of it. And he said he had lived in Connecticut, and they fought a Walmart, just a plain old Walmart, not a supercenter. He said the Walmart came to town, and it was a nice little town in Connecticut, and now there is just a Walmart. So I leave you with that. I have copies for each of the seven commissioners. I have a copy for Mr. Haas, if that could be given to him, and I have a copy for the clerk for the record.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more public comment?
Hi, my name is Jim Lynetta. I live on Aaron Drive, and I'm opposed to the Bohemia Project. And the main reason is simply the size and scale of this project. Now, the Auburn Bowman Community Plan states, Section Policy B-18 states, "Height and scale of new development shall be compatible with that of surrounding development." And this building, this whole project clearly is not compatible to be next to a neighborhood. In Mr. Cavalt's Auburn Journal full-page ad, he used Target, Home Depot, and Staples as examples of successful stores in Auburn. So I want to compare those stores to the Bohemia Project. Target is 97,000 square feet on 10 acres. It's nowhere near a neighborhood. Home Depot is 105,000 square feet, 11 acres, roughly the same size, and also nowhere near a neighborhood. Staples is less than four acres. I don't have the square footage on the building, but the whole shopping center, parking lot and all the other businesses are less than four acres. That whole shopping center would fit inside the Bohemia Building. Bohemia Building is 3.5 acres. It's the size of the whole shopping center. And it's within 100 feet of the houses on Dire Court and Canal Street also. And this is, this is a perfect example of what's appropriate to be next to a neighborhood and what's not. Home Depot and Target, large projects, they're nowhere near a neighborhood. Staples, a smaller scale down project, is next to a neighborhood. And there would be no problem if it was, it was that size. Now, Mr. Cavalt claims, you know, there are thousands of supporters, thousands of supporters. I've been to five meetings now, not one person has come up in support of this project. So I don't know where all these thousands of supporters are. In today's Auburn Journal, Mr. Cavalt says that since the Canal Street entrance issue is gone now, that 95% of the neighbors are okay with it, and there's just a small group that doesn't want anything built there. And that's just not true. I don't know where he gets his numbers or he gets his information, but that's just not true. What we don't want is just this large-scale project right in our neighborhood. You don't put a large-scale commercial development next to a single-family residential neighborhood without some kind of buffer or a green belt. I mean, they're putting it right there, within 100 feet of houses, this huge building. And so I'm just asking, please do not approve this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else making a public comment that's not related to anything on the agenda today?
I'm Carol Arby, and I'm here to talk against the Bohemia Project. I think when you're looking at the health of a community, and that includes all the concerns about family values, et cetera, and also physical and mental health. We have this amount of traffic flowing on 49, wafting into neighborhoods. You're putting our children at risk, you're putting our adults at risk from all the pollution that's going to occur from this. Actually, Highway 49 is now so impacted in that zone that I cannot imagine another 7,000 vehicles traversing that area for that purpose. I think in planning, you really need to look at access to a major project and how it impacts neighborhoods, flow of traffic, and above all, health. That's the one thing that we can't undo. We can always find money to spend at other stores, smaller ones, et cetera, but we can't afford to really risk our health because there's no mitigation whatsoever in any, any plan that you may come up with that will actually correct this. So I really beg you to think about the impact on traffic and on health, because they are very big concerns to the people in our neighborhood, and they should be concerns to the people in the community and above all, the planners for this community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more? Okay, well, hearing no more people stepping forward for public comment, we'll go ahead and move to our first agenda item, which is, I guess Alex Fish is going to be handling this, and this is down in the Ofer area, and it's a extension of the conditional use permit for Robinson Quarry.
It is. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. The request, as you noted, it's a modification to the conditional use permit to extend the operational life of Robinson's Newcastle gravel pit for 10 years in order to complete mine reclamation, excuse me, in order to complete mining of gravel and decomposed grant deposits and to complete mine reclamation, and the operation of the site would be extended from January 23rd, 2010 to January 23rd, 2020. As you can see here, the site is located on the north side of Ofer Road near the intersection of, the interchange of Highway 193 and Interstate 80. I should note at this time that the request includes approval of a temporary conditional use permit to allow for the continued storage and processing of an existing stockpile of asphalt grindings. That stockpile is estimated about 10,000 cubic yards and is remnant from a larger stockpile that was placed at the site during the resurfacing of 80 through this area in 2005, 2006. Now, let's see. The project site includes split zoning, zoned for highway services and farm uses, both of which include the combining mineral reserve and special purpose zoning designations, and that's in denotation of the mining use. The surface mine occupies approximately 10 acres of the project site, and this mine has been operated, mined in successive layers for approximately 40 years from this east-west trending ridge to a current average depth of approximately 88 feet. This is the remnant stockpile of asphalt grindings, as seen in most recent aerial photograph I got off Google Earth, it's probably a couple of years old now. Give you just a short background of the site. The permitted operation of the site began in 1967 when the zoning administrator approved a land development agreement to operate a surface mine. As I noted, that surface mine has been continuously operated since that time. There's been approximately 1 million yards of material pulled from the site over that period. The project site is moderately visible, we'll back up here. From portions of the Interstate 80 right of way, really just about right here is where you can actually, if you're not paying attention to your driving too much, you could look up and kind of see the pit area. But otherwise, there is a row of evergreen trees that was planted along here about 20 years ago that mostly shields the operational area. This part of the site is blocked by topography, which is also the same for the surrounding properties. The site is considerably higher than the surrounding properties, and the mine pit itself is mined down to an elevation about 15 to 20 feet below this little area here where the canal traverses. Let's see. We're going to move on here to some, this is an historic photograph showing the site in September of 2005. You can see how much larger the stockpile was at that time, so we do have evidence that the mine operator is complying with the previously approved temporary use permit to get rid of this material. Go here, we're going to skip that, go in and show you the operations. Wish these came up a little better in here. They're not because of the light. Currently, the mine is operated from excavation from the westerly pit wall. Back up here, you can see this is the processing area where all the sorting and screening is done. This is in the easterly portion of the project site. And give you just a short overview of our review. We did send written notice of the requested extension of the permit to the Office of Mines and Reclamation. They sent back a written response, it's included in your packet, that noted that the continuation of the mining under the current reclamation plan was a simple administrative procedure that the county could deal with, and their only request was that the reclamation period be revised to reflect any new timeframe for the mine. Furthermore, with regards to the aspects of the mine and how it fits in with the community plan area, including this request for the temporary approval of the conditional use permit to continue to stockpile this material until it's gotten rid of. The project site is located within the westernmost edge of an industrial area located along Ofer Road and is surrounded by undeveloped land, all of which is owned by the mine operator. The remnant stockpile of asphalt grindings is located in the northeast portion of the site where it's really out of sight, out of mind, it's not visible to anyone. And the continued screening, sale, and use of those grindings in Robinson's construction projects during the term of the approval, the DRC's opinion would not conflict with expand or make more intensive the existing use as a mine. Lastly, I did take this project to the Newcastle Ofer MAC last Thursday evening. After a short discussion on the project, the MAC took action unanimously to recommend that the commission approve the project as proposed. With that, the Development Review Committee recommends that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit modification, including the approval of the temporary conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval and findings in staff's report. Those findings include approval for Class 1 and Class 4 categorical exemption from SEQA. Last thing I'll note is that under prior action of your commission to reapprove the mine in 2000, that included the approval of the current reclamation plan and also included adoption of mitigated negative declaration. Was the DRC's review of this project determined that reauthorization of the mine and approval of the temporary conditional use permit would not result in new or increased impacts beyond those that were identified in the previous environmental document? You have any questions?
Questions from the commission? Go ahead.
The two-year limitation for the grindings?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the applicant's request, or is that staff's limitations, or?
The ordinance actually places that limitation. So it was previously approved in 2005, or excuse me, in January 2006, and obviously that time has come and gone. We still have a small portion of the materials located on site, so we felt it was appropriate to acknowledge the continuation of that and see if we couldn't have your concurrence, demonstrating that they are in fact getting rid of the material to continue to do so over a period of two years, I think, and with respect to how much material was there, it should be gone by the end of that period. So yeah, the limitation that you're asking about, it's a limitation imposed by ordinance. By ordinance, okay. That's correct.
So they're in violation right now?
Technically, yes.
And they're seeking approval to continue that violation?
Would remediate the violation. Approval from your commission would actually correct the violation. Your concurrence with the continuation of that would correct the violation.
So this is overlooking the fact that they had three extra years and haven't done it?
It would, I think it would be an acknowledgement that the use was previously approved and they have been doing what they can to get rid of it. I don't see evidence, when I'm looking at historic information and discussing issues with the applicant, it does not appear to me that they have imported any additional material to the site. They're doing their best to get rid of it. I did ask the applicant what it would take to get rid of that stockpile as it sits now and move it to another location, perhaps a location on Drive and Way, and the response was that the fuel cost, without actually selling the material, was simply prohibitive. And so we had to analyze whether or not the continuation of that use into the future was appropriate or not. Our review was predicated on the basis that we have a mine site, it's predisposed to the mine use, and this use is not so dissimilar from that use, thus our recommendation.
Okay, maybe one quick question here, mainly just for information. The reclamation plan for this particular site, what does that look like, or what would the reclamation look like?
You're talking about the end result.
At the end result, yeah.
The end result is, if I can just paraphrase, the reclamation plan is that it will be mined down to an elevation of approximately 90 feet, which is about the floor level now, and that that floor, pit floor, would be available for use as consistent with the zoning. You could have two, potentially two rural residences constructed on the property at the back end with highway services or commercial type uses at the front end. And then the reclamation plan kind of further adds in there that because it has been operated as a mine, it's going to also be predisposed to that use and other similar type uses.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Okay, well, thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
People that are proponents of the project, would you like to step forward?
I do have Paul Ferrera.
Hi, my name's Paul Ferrera with Robinson Sand and Gravel. I'd answer any questions if you have any questions.
Hey, Mickey, would you push your mic?
The last position of the board was that the leftover asphalt was to be disposed of within two years, and that was four years ago. Why the lag?
Well, what I understand, from what I understand, is those permits like that, they only issue them in two-year increments, and then with the economy, the way the economy dropped, we're not hardly moving any material. That's why I'm asking for 10 years to continue our mining operation, because with the economy, we don't have.
Well, the asphalt's got nothing to do with the mining, right? It has to do with grinding it up and selling it or something.
Right, we sell it, we sell it as a road base material.
Okay.
When it got put in there, it actually had to do with, with the, you know, those trucks were going to go to Sacramento, and that's a lot of fuel, that's a lot of emissions, that's a lot of other, you know, things. And so when we brought it into there, it was also, we can, you know, use it locally and customers can save money because it's cheaper than buying, mining new rock. And so, you know, it made sense to me, it may not make sense to other people.
You had a temporary permit at the time for that, too, correct?
Yeah. So if the economy would have stayed like it was, that would have been gone long ago.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public that would like to make a public comment? Okay, I just see a bunch of blank faces out there, so we'll bring it back to the commission. And anybody who would like to make a statement, or a comment, or a motion, or?
Well, I have, in some regard, as to the 10-year period, I'd be probably more inclined to go with half of that. Gives us a little more check on whether they're actually getting rid of the material that they're stockpiling there or not. I don't know if 10 years is really, might be too long without insubversion, so to speak.
I think they have two to get rid of the imported material they're stockpiling, and ten to finish the mining operation and the reclamation, is what I understand.
Okay, so two years only left?
Two for the asphalt. Two for the asphalt grinding.
Right, well, they had two before, and then two after that, so how do you reconcile that the two years is enough?
The purpose of my question is, I don't think it probably is. If we could give them more, I'd be inclined to give them more, but I guess by ordinance, we can't.
But they've had two years, and nothing happened, and then they had two years again, nothing happened. I mean, as far as them being able to get rid of it, but that was primarily an economic factor, as I understand.
Basically, so you've got a pile of ground rock sitting in the ground.
Well, my comment would be, I, I think that what we're sort of missing is market-driven, and so it's not something where they can just grind it up and, you know, give it away. They have to sell it, so people have to haul it off. And that's, I think that's where the problem that he's talking about, the economy, and I tend to agree in the current market, you know.
You know, economics is only a single factor, and they were obviously paid to have it put there in the first place, they didn't take it for free, did they? I'm just suggesting that it appears to me that they had an ordinance that they were supposed to be gone within two years, and it wasn't, nothing happened. Why?
Well, at least as I understand, and maybe I could be corrected, but it appears that there might have been as much as 100,000 cubic feet or yards there at one time, and now they're down to about 10,000, is that correct, or?
The PowerPoint, but, thanks, Paul. Go through here. This photograph right here is the existing stockpile, and that's what we're left with at this point. And through some kind of analysis of aerial photography, I'm going to back up one more space here, this is the This is the stockpile as photographed, probably in about 2008. Like I said, this is off of Google Earth. Some of this is just stuff that's left on the ground. The actual stockpile's right here. This is what was on the site in 2005. And so I think that, you know, I'm confident that the information that Mr. Ferrera has provided to me is accurate. That's, that was my finding. And then again, moving forward to the photographs, this is what we're left with.
Okay, and then maybe another quick question. So a two-year extension, at two years, the county would go check and see if it's met, right? It's not that we're going to wait for five or 10 years?
Yeah, actually, and Sarah brings up a good point. The engineering and surveying department, through the requirements of the reclamation plan, is actually required to do an inspection on the site annually. So we would have an opportunity to follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
So the fact that we didn't renew this conditional use permit a couple of years ago was just an oversight, basically?
I think that's probably the case.
Okay, is there any more comments, or is there a motion?
Well, I guess...
If somebody wants to step forward, go ahead.
To move forward, I move that we approve the conditional use permit modification, including the approval of the temporary conditional use permit, subject to the following findings and attached modified conditions of approval with the attached SEQA and conditional use permit.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, well, let's go ahead, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, well, now we'll move to our next agenda item, which is Jerry Haas is going to make the initial presentation, and this has to do with Celebration Community Fellowship Church proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. The request for your consideration at this time is a minor use permit, which allows for the construction and operation of a 19,000-square-foot church on a vacant 3.5-acre parcel. It's adjacent to Interstate 80, just north of the city of Auburn, near Meadow Vista. This is an aerial view of the project site, shaded in pink right here. As you can see, the site in immediate vicinity is all zone farm. There's some open space zoning that's on the north side of the freeway there. These lines, you can't make them out too well, but right through here is a drainage swell that transects the northern half of the site and carries runoff across the property. The topography generally slopes from the north property line and from the south property line toward this drainage swell. The Celebration Community Fellowship currently holds worship in Meadow Vista. With the purchase of the site around 2005, they began developing plans to construct on this property. And also in 2005, the church contracted an archaeologist, Mr. Raymond Benson, to conduct a Phase 1 archaeological survey of the site to determine the potential for cultural resources to exist on the property. Mr. Benson concluded that there was a strong likelihood of discovering cultural resources and recommended a Phase 2 survey be conducted, and that's where they do test augers and test pits. The church commissioned a Phase 2 survey, which did determine the presence of cultural resources, and concluded that the site plan should be, should locate the church to the south side of the property, actually, south of the swell over here, and away from the most significant resources that he was able to discover at that time. In 2007, the applicant submitted an environmental questionnaire for the project, and the site plan is pretty similar to what you see here. More or less, the building is in generally the same location. This building was originally out here, but it moved to the eastern portion of the site. Mitigated negative declaration was completed in late 2008, and the project was set before a zoning administrator hearing on September 4th, 2008. During the public review period for that mitigated neg-deck that we did previously, staff received two comment letters that challenged the environmental documents and requested a continuation of the ZA hearing until additional analysis of the significance of the cultural resources could be analyzed. The hearing was continued, and staff conducted a site visit with conservative Native Americans, the project archaeologists, representatives of the Native American Heritage Commission, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the property owner and his consultant. The results of the site visit and subsequent discussion was that a new Phase 2, Phase 1 and Phase 2 archaeological survey should be prepared for the project by another archaeologist. The church then hired a second archaeologist, Cindy Arrington, who's present here today, who conducted the surveys, which indicated not only a greater number of resources, but also resources of greater significance than the previous archaeologists had been able to uncover. Ms. Arrington's report concluded that the most significant resources existed in the northwest corner of the site up in this area, and that the project should avoid that area, just simply not build in that site, in that portion of the site. Ms. Arrington also prepared a detailed monitoring and treatment plan that's attached as Attachment J in her staff report, and that is intended to handle potential discoveries during construction. Because the archaeologists had slightly different conclusions as to the extent of the cultural resources on the site, staff requested that the applicant commission an independent third-party peer review, at this time by a third archaeologist, to review the Arrington report. We contacted the Native American Heritage Commission, who provided us a list of recommended archaeologists, and then we selected one from that list. The peer review found some disagreement with the methodologies in the Arrington report, but generally agreed with the conclusion, with one notable exception. The peer review suggested that the site also be considered eligible for recordation into the National Register of Historic Places. It doesn't mean necessarily that the site's going to be recorded into the NRHP, but that it be made eligible for recordation. Ms. Arrington's report was revised to include this language, and the mitigated neg-deck was modified and sent out for public review. As you can see on the site plan, an environmentally sensitive area up in this corner, it's actually a 70-foot radius, it's 140-foot diameter, the whole area that would be avoided, but 70 feet of it, a portion of it on this part of the site, will be recorded on the parcel as an exclusive public easement, and it would remain in perpetuity. This will avoid impacts to the most sensitive area of the site and allow access for sacred purposes. Through this avoidance, with the protection of the monitoring and treatment plan, and the requirement that the property owner submit an application for recordation of the site to NHRP, staff has determined that potential impacts to cultural resources will be reduced to a less-than-significant level. This is what the project site would look like when it's constructed. This is a view from Interstate 80, looking to the southeast. And this would be the view of the site within five to 10 years, following the required native landscape screening that's going to be planted along that north property line. Staff has determined that the project is consistent with underlying zoning, its farm, and also with the Auburn Bowman Community Plan land use designations. And with the mitigation set forth and modified mitigated negative declaration, all environmental impacts can be reduced to a less-than-significant level. With that, staff recommends approval of the mitigated neg-deck and of the project as proposed, subject to the findings and the conditions of approval that are contained in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Gary, was any thought given to fencing that environmentally sensitive area?
If there would be fencing out there, it would be limited to something like bollards, posting cable bollards. The idea is that we don't want to draw too much attention to the site. This is per request by Native Americans who are interested in the concern of the property. So fencing, it's not really something they're interested in, although we could entertain that for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, maybe, I have a question about that, too. In terms of an exclusive public easement, what does that mean? Like, I guess the reason I'm asking the question is, you know, if it's evident that the public knows that there's an archaeological site there and that that's a sensitive area. So if at some point in time, you have a public easement, and the public just goes in there and starts raiding the archaeological site, the church wouldn't have any control over that. How would that be? I guess I can see a problem in that somehow, but maybe that's where the fencing question comes from.
Perhaps the archaeologists can speak to that. I know that if it's, at least if it's not disturbed at this point, I don't know how we prevent future disturbance. As it is right now, the property's not really properly fenced, and access to the site is available to anybody. It's illegal to trespass on the property. At this point, it would mean it would become sort of a park. It would be a public area, and there'd be access rights across the property for sacred purposes. I don't know how we can prevent people from coming in there and digging at night. I'm not sure how we can deal with that.
Yeah, that's, public easement would give everybody the right to just go there, right?
That's correct. We couldn't make it an exclusive easement for certain individuals, it'd have to be for everybody.
Okay. You see, the drainage that goes across the property?
Correct.
Was that, is that a natural drainage, or is that a drainage that was part of the construction of the interstate?
That drainage appears historic. It actually runs from the east property line across and then down to the freeway, so it doesn't have anything to do, from appearances anyway, with the construction of the freeway. It looks as though, the location of that east, of that drainage, may have changed over time, but it historically takes water from the property to the east, which is further uphill, and takes it down toward the freeway.
So it's a natural feature?
It's a natural feature, yes.
And is that the reason why the Army Corps is...
The Army Corps is involved exactly for that reason. These are federal waters. There is a culvert, I think, that comes out over on the other side of the road here, Neils Road. And so that may, in some sense, concentrate the water at the north point or at the east point of the swell, but the drainage has always existed.
Okay. And then, as far as the eligibility, as far as the county's role, if it is eligible, determined eligible, what's the county's role in that, or how's? You know, I'm familiar with the public land where, you know, it's dealt very differently, but this is private land, so an eligible site on private land, how's that handled?
The county doesn't have much of a role in it at all, actually. The property owner would be required to submit an application to the National Register of Historic Places, and they would determine whether or not the site is considered eligible. So it's sort of out of our hands. The most we can do is make the requirement that the property owner at least take those steps to see that it can be recorded, if it's sufficient, if it meets their criteria. So the county, at that point, would step out. We would just want to see some evidence that that application had been submitted, and then probably that would, in fact, that would be, need to be determined before the improvement plans would be approved.
Okay, so this project could change over time in relationship to the eligibility determination?
It certainly could. And the treatment plan requires that there's ongoing monitoring of the site. There are lots of different things that could pop up as a result of construction here. The treatment plan identifies and accounts for inadvertent discoveries, and if they are found, then everything comes to a halt, and the corners come out, and we take a look at what resources exist there and determine whether those also need to be recorded.
Okay, thank you. Is that it? Okay, well, thank you, Jerry. And so now, if we have the project proponent, would you like to step forward and address This is a proponent. Are you, just to address the issue, or are you one of the...
I'm representing the owner. My name is George Attaberry. I'm a civil engineer in Auburn.
Okay.
And we've been working on this for five years, and I'm here with Pastor Cedric and the archaeologists, and I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the commission? Okay, I ask a few questions. Do you have any things to add to the answers that Jerry gave?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, now I'll open it up to the public to step forward and make comments. Make sure that you identify yourself and your address.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Galen Halbert. I was a Platte County employee for 16 years. When I retired, I was a program manager at Child Welfare Services. I am a member of the Celebration Church, and I'm here to offer my support for this. I think if you visit the site, anybody who stands on the site itself, you can see that there's minimal impact visually or ecologically in any way at all. Also, traffic, daily traffic would be very minimal, and I just, again, want to offer my support for the establishment of this church building. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Vice Chairman. My name is Grayson Coney. I am the Cultural Director of the Chayacamayadu Indian Tribe in Grass Valley. I am not an archaeologist. I happen to be a retired land development superintendent for Del Webb. You may have seen my face before in Lincoln Hills and Del Webb Sun City projects. Since my retirement, I've taken on the role of Cultural Director of the Chayacamayadu. I've spent the last several years doing FERC relicensing survey with PG&E and NID, doing cultural survey of 27 mountain lakes and water conveyance systems for their hydroelectric power relicensing. I come here fairly well-versed in construction. I'd like to start this morning to mention that we started with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we gave liberty and justice to all, and we are indivisible as a nation, and I wholly agree with this. For the Celebration Community Church, they have the liberty, being the landowners, to build their church, and we do not disagree with that. At the Mack meeting a week and a half ago, I was told by a council member that if Cedric Lee chooses to build this project with a teaspoon, he is more than welcome to. And I agree. As far as liberty and justice for the tribe, I'd like to say that to endure as a tribe, invisible is our right as a partner in this beautiful nation that we live in. Also, to preserve our patrimony. And real quick, patrimony is an estate inherited from one's father or ancestors, any quality characteristic, et cetera, that is inherited and heritage, the estate or endowment of a church, a religious house, and et cetera. In Appendix A, it's mentioned that there's finds that qualify for unanticipated discoveries, funerary objects, sacred objects, and cultural patrimony associated or unassociated with human remains. What we're talking about is a burial ground. This burial ground, if it were the size of a dime, and the church site was the, the whole lot would be the size of a half-dollar, the dime resting on top of it. This cry site or burial ground is a major portion of this site. The reason that, what I believe the reason why the archaeologists deemed it insignificant because of its disturbance, not only from pot hunters, who we have had arrested in the past for digging beads and bones on this site, is that Interstate 80 and Highway 40 and the subsequent overpass in 1973 of Dry Creek Road, there were claims made by the archaeologists that soil disturbance is caused by this. I researched the as-built notes, the rec, I can't even say the word, relinquents maps, and found that all the property that was obtained for the constructions of the roads, none of the property of the church was utilized for this. On Highway 40, there was a fill associated with the nearest intersect with this burial ground. Interstate 80 never came close to the burial ground. In '73, the overpass that was built encroached on some of the historic features, and the as-built notes left evidence of the milling station that's under the freeway now through the K3 channel diversion. On the north side of Interstate 80, there's that big stucco drainage. Well, they took Clipper Creek and moved it over there. I'm big in grading land. I've moved a little dirt in my day. I can recognize a fill and a cut. They're, they're really getting back to patrimony, they call it undiscovered. We know that this place is here. We know that even the views from our burial ground are sacred to us. It's a TCP, a traditional cultural property. If you allow us to come and still hold worship in our burial ground, we're still looking at the site of a stucco church. If I can back this up a little... If I can back this up a little, and here's the pointer, right here is a pit houses, right here is a milling station, right here is a 50-foot round, roundhouse, right here is probably the largest tree in Placer County and is a kitchen area. Right here at the ball field is a stone quarry, and all of this fire-affected rock in this area is from a lithic industry in this area. This village site is called How Nosum Soka, a meadow place for rabbits. The burial ground, which is right here, is called How Nosum Ustu, and ustu is reserved for old burial grounds. This is one of the oldest burial grounds in Placer County. Let me turn my page here. Getting to the relinquishment maps, I have the number, the request number is 024227, and the as-bills associated with it clearly demonstrate that no soil was either removed or stored or balanced out in private lands. All the soil balancing was done on-site there. And I have read all of these as-built notes. I was in, I constructed as-built notes for 15 years. When you want to find something out, that's where you go. In my initial letter years ago, I stated all of these as-built notes, they were never researched. Yet, our archaeologists makes claims that the site has been destroyed through the activities of the construction of Highway 40 and Interstate 80, and also later the overpass there at Neils Road. If you remember the giraffe tree from years and years ago, I'm born and raised in this area, that giraffe tree lays dead in the center of that burial ground. We have a problem with a 70-foot setback for a cultural easement or whatever they choose to give the name. We further believe that this site is highly eligible as a historic place. If you have any questions, I'd like to answer them because I think this conversation can continue for a minute, but I'd like to know what is prudent for me to be speaking about at this time.
Have questions?
1973, when the interchange was built, was there any conversations with Caltrans about this site?
No, actually, the interchange up at Clipper Gap exhumed some bodies, and most of the conversation was done up there at that time.
But in '73, there was some impact on this and by that interchange?
Yes, there was.
You didn't do anything?
No, I was still a pretty young kid.
Worrying about something else.
Yeah, I was 13 at the time.
Okay. Was the tribe interested in it at that time?
No, the tribe was somewhat still scattered at the time. This is new evidence coming to light for most of the professionals involved in this field. Liz Enos, who is a resident of Meadow Vista, most of the information about this site came from, notes from her done by Norm Wilson in 1963. So if in '73, nothing was known and nothing was done, it was simply because the archaeologists involved at that time did not happen upon the recorded notes of Norm Wilson with Liz Enos in December of '63. This isn't, this isn't one small site to preserve. This is a major village site, How Nosum Soka. That's what, what really kind of shakes us a little bit is that the only information that the archaeologists used relevant to the site that was off-site was her determination that the site was corrupted by construction of the highways and such, which is unfounded and has no foundational fact to back it up, although I have supplied foundational fact in our letters to back it up, and none of that research was ever done. Kind of sounds like a no-no. We have very strong feelings about this traditional cultural property. And to have three different archaeologists doing the same survey and coming up with different answers each time lends us to believe that, for some reason, something's going on. We don't know what it is. We can assume this or the other. We, as a tribe, automatically assume that Pastor Cedric Lee loves the color blue and that Cindy Arrington painted him a Monet. It's as simple as that. We'd like to get to the bottom of what's going on here and find some truth and back it up with foundational fact. We have attached a response to the mitigated negative declaration, and I hope that you can find time to read the four pages that we, as a tribe, wrote with our consultant, who is a registered archaeologist with a PhD. And we've had this report sent out to many people, and we drafted the letter ourselves with our information. And I guess I can leave it with that. I'd like to introduce the Reverend Michael Ben Ortiz as a spiritual leader of our tribe.
He's going to speak next. Let me, let me kind of ask a couple of questions here. In terms of, you know, you describe it as a very large area as part of the site. And so this parcel and several other parcels currently or in the future have the potential to impact?
Yes.
This large area?
Yeah. We haven't located any cry sites or burial grounds on any of the adjacent parcels. I doubt there will be. But as far as pit houses, roundhouses, kitchen middens, and all those sorts of things, definitely.
Okay. And so potentially in the future, this, everything is going to be changed out there in terms of different proposals that come forward on all those parcels?
It could be. If there's no change to a specific or general plan in the county or city, then the SB18 Burton won't come into effect, and there won't be any consultation required from the tribes. If zoning changes, then we would be able to help consult on those changes. But until that happens, we're pretty much have to sit back and wait for the next construction project near a burial ground to occur. We don't know when we're going to have an opportunity to preserve another cry site. We're running out of them.
Okay. On this one, I'm presuming that the 70-foot area is a cry site? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
We cannot determine that because there has been found no limit to the archaeological discovery on that site. In other words, there is no dotted line out there saying it ends here.
Okay. Now that, during construction, I presume that there'll be monitoring, probably monitoring from the tribe that goes on?
Yeah, and that's where the teaspoon scenario came up from the MAC. They told me if Pastor Cedric Lee wants to dig it with a teaspoon, he can, because basically that's what's going to happen. It's going to be a very stop-and-go stuttering construction. It's going to be very difficult to even acquire a pertinent bid from anyone. How are you going to bid on a construction site that's stop-and-go? Well, you've got to pay your employees to stand there three or four times a week because each time you move another teaspoon, they're saying that if we find three chips of stone within a two-square-meter area, that we have to halt the project. You can do that on a surface survey of the area when the grass is down, so pretty much the project's going to be stalled continually.
Okay, but that would be the church's problem if they're stalled continually, right? I mean, that's, if they go forward.
I enjoy hearing you say that, but I believe it's going to be the community's problem because it's not going to be a very tasty project, especially like a big banner on Interstate 80. It's going to be well-known in the community that, boy, what's going on out there? We don't have any plans to go to press or anything like that. We just want to see what's right is right. If we could purchase this land from Mr. Lee today, we would absolutely entertain that. We would even entertain fundraising until we could purchase it. We are not a gaming tribe. We own a thrift store. At the MAC Council, they asked me, well, why don't you buy it? You have plenty of money, as far as we know. And I'd already introduced myself as a neighboring tribe from Grass Valley. They assume that Indian people have money and can take care of their own problems. Well, the truth is, we're all indivisible. We're one community. And so me coming to you as a tribal member is, shouldn't be any different than anyone in the community coming to you, okay? We're all one big group here. But as far as the justice and liberty of it, we need to shake that out. And if this is our creed, our oath this morning, then I would hope that this is postponed until we get more relevant information and somebody digs into those as-built notes so that they can dispute the claims made by the archaeologists with no foundational fact.
You're saying relevant information? There's been three surveys of the site already, haven't there?
Yes, but if they say that the construction of the freeway has altered the integrity of the cultural site, they've been misled. You should state that with some foundational fact. I have found the foundational fact, and it still hasn't been reviewed.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay.
My name is Michael Ben Ortiz. Reverend Michael Ben Ortiz, I don't use that very often. I was ordained in 1982. I'm a graduate of Golden Gate Seminary in Mill Valley. I've also worked with two developers, How Porter Homes and Morrison Homes. We've done a lot of construction in the area. I'm also the Chayacamaydoo Public Spokesperson. I'm a broadcaster on KBMR FM, Nevada City. I do a lot of volunteer work, extensive volunteer work, on behalf of the Indian people. I'd like to say, first of all, in the previous discussions that I've heard, that the word environmentally sensitive and culturally has been like separated and just kind of like substitute one word for the other. And part of the work that I do with the Indian tribe in our communities, from Plasterville all the way up to Lassen County, down to Sacramento, and up to the summit of the Sierra, is to try to educate people on what it means to be a native person. And in essence, is that in situations as this, I feel that we get negated. We get, there's this philosophy that we have that we're all connected and that we all belong to each other, and one, one part of what we do affects someone else in what we do. So in this particular instance, we have a proposed project that wants to be seen as a separate entity and a protected part where, where somebody else can take responsibility to see that our cultural needs are done. And throughout the history of this great nation, we have had, I call it a segmented way of thinking, to where it's all little boxes, and the boxes don't necessarily come together in one harmonious unit. So I work really hard on trying to see that we understand, as native people, that we are not negated. And so when we say it's a culturally sensitive area, we mean that it's a culturally sensitive area. And I'm speaking as people that aren't generally understood. That's why we're usually quiet about things. We don't want to run up and have a sign that says cemetery. We don't want to have the typical picture of a church that says, here's the church and here's the cemetery, and here's where our church members have passed away, and this is where they're buried. That's not the picture that we have of a burial site or a crying ground. The object or the idea of even having a crying ground is not really in our culture. We're not taught that in school. But the Native Americans feel strongly that that's what they need, and that's their place, and that's part of what they need for preserving and enhancing their, their future. So where do we take our Indian children to show where our ancestors were buried? Do we have to adopt the headstone in the ground like my sister has, or can they just go to a place where it's just an open field and everyone's there and the grass is growing and the trees are doing what they do? The great cycle of life goes on and on. What we're seeing here is a matter of valuing who we are. We've had people come and dig on our site, on what we call a sacred site, and it's just, we don't like that, we oppose that, but it still has gone on. It's a matter of respect. I had, I barely rarely use the word reverend in front of my name because I don't really feel like that gives me any special power over anyone. But I use it here because the Indian people are not given the proper respect that they're due in our community. We have a big gaming tribe down the street. They have staff to take care of things. They have not said that this is where our descendants are from, but the Chayacamaydoo have descendants from there, and we work as volunteers. We work very hard to get our point across, to educate the community about what we do. And what we do is about healing. What we do is about bringing the community together. And so we really stand against what is proposed here with this church. Even though churches are good, churches have their place in the community, they are of value to what we do. We really do not believe this is what we want. We have a, we have a phrase called oklachata, and that means is that the people work together to build a community. And our native community is not preserved. We have a freeway going right through that. And Mr. Crabbe, you asked earlier, made a statement about where were the Indians when this was done. We're busy trying to protect other sacred places. The onslaught of the history in California that, you might want to check the Sierra Fund, is we went before the state and actually brought Indian history into consideration, into the environmental cleanup and things that need to be done in our, in our, in our community. So I would really hope that this project would be denied. I would really hope that the county would look into drawing a big fence around the whole project and letting us have a place or work till we can get our finances in order so we can have a place to preserve something for our future. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good morning, Commissioner, Commissioners and Board and the Chairman. My name is Cindy Arrington. I'm a professional registered archaeologist, and I conducted the work at the site. I'd like to address a few of the misinterpretations that had been presented before you this morning. First of all, Appendix A was referenced and misquoted as the patrimony items. Appendix A actually states if these items are found, it doesn't state that we have found those items, it said if these items are found, then X, Y, and Z will happen. So that's the first misinterpretation. Second one are on the Caltrans as-bills from 1973. I actually went to Caltrans and pulled those as-bills myself because Mr. Coney had stated that there were notes on there. No such notes exist on those as-bills stating there is any cultural affinity in the site with the overcross or any other area there. They also mentioned that I had stated that the site had had fill or the soil from the site had been moved. I did not state that. What I had said is that actual construction from Highway 80 and Highway 40 have pushed around the soils on the very northwestern edge. I don't believe the site sat squarely on this particular piece of property. It is my belief that it's set under Highway 80, what is now Highway 80. So I did not mention that the soils had been transported or stored or moved. I simply had stated that push piles from the original, where I believe the original site would have been, have been pushed up against. Mr. Coney talked about the oldest known burial.
You say, on this push piles, could you clarify that or show us where on the photograph what you're talking about there?
Yes, sir. I'm sure, you know, most of you are familiar with construction, and when you're constructing something of this magnitude, you are not confined to the limits of the shoulder here. So as they were constructing this, they were pushing lots of dirt all around this vicinity. So at some point in time, they pushed dirt up all along this edge, and Mr. Coney is correct in that they did stockpile some stuff here for this overcrossing. But in taking, in making of Highway 80 and Highway 40 initially, or State Road 40 initially, as they pushed through these lanes, dirt would have been pushed and maneuvered around. So I'm not saying that they took dirt from here and put it there, or they took dirt from there and put it here. It's just that in the overall construction with heavy equipment, that they have grazed the edge of this with spoils from the middle of Highway 80.
Okay.
Oldest burials, Mr. Coney spoke about saying that the oldest burials they know are there. Unfortunately, all the stratigraphic material, being the layers of soil that are laid down in the law of superposition, says the oldest stuff is on bottom, the newest stuff is on top. In all the excavation that I've done there, it shows that the soil is dramatically mixed. We found large chunks, the size of your fist, of asphalt down in with beads, chipstone, the couple of teeth that we found and whatnot. So the soil has, shows that it's been pushed and moved dramatically. The site has been looted for years and years and years. It's a known archaeological site by the black market looters. They come frequently, unfortunately, and loot there.
Are you talking about the easement area or just outside the easement area?
Unfortunately, the entire property, they have looted.
But as far as finding asphalt mixed in?
As far as finding asphalt, sir, it's just been in the, what I call, the ESA area. Well, not, not just asphalt. As far as finding cultural material connected to human remains or what could be conceived as a burial site, is only constricted to one very small corner. And again, Mr. Coney said that there were no limits or dotted lines, and actually there are. All the material found on this end of the site is less than eight inches deep. eight inches deep. As you know, this is a hill that slopes down this way, so it could be washed down from anything up in here. Um, the only part of the site that has any depth is this area here. And I took it down over three feet until I hit what we call geology or soil base, the basement of-
And that's where you found asphalt too?
Yes, sir. Um, so everything else on this site here, and again, you can see the drainage that goes through here. It's a natural flood plain. Uh, so there's a lot of depositional movement around the site. Would wash stuff down and around, but there's nothing deeper. Most everything is under eight inches on this area of the site. Again, the only place that we find any depth, and again, it is entirely mixed, is in this one section where we've designated an ESA. Uh, Mr. Cooney also mentioned, uh, Ms. Liz Enoz, uh, and her exact statements were south of what is now known as Colfax, in a valley lies the village. There are dozens of valleys between here and there. Here's a picture of Lizzy with her granddaughter. This is an, actually an archaeological site that is well-known that mentions all the artifacts or features that Mr. Cooney mentioned, pit houses, roundhouse, grinding slicks. It is not in this area, and I won't point it out exactly. It's not anywhere in this area. It's between here and there. But it sits in a valley, south of Colfax, and again, mentions everything. None of the perceived features that Mr. Cooney mentioned, I believe, roundhouse and pit houses and, and grinding features and quarries have ever been recorded professionally. They're not known to exist. Where Ms. Enoz was very helpful in recording this large site, again, mentioning-
Is that site, there was a name to the, uh, that was given for this, the site? Is that the one that you're talking about there?
She, she does not call it by name, sir, nor do the archaeologists who actually recorded the site.
Okay.
It is not recorded by name. I will not disclose exactly where it is, again, to keep it, uh, sacred. Um, the last thing I'd like to say is, as an archaeologist, in a professional archaeologist with over fifteen years' experience, if I thought for one moment that something that had never been disturbed or in fact had intact anything there, I would be the first one to stand up and say, please, don't do it. But unfortunately, the entire site has been disturbed highly. We find no depth whatsoever across the site, except in the area that we've designated as an ESA to protect it. There's nothing intact. Um, but one can never be one hundred percent sure, so we felt it, I felt it best to preserve it as is and leave it there. May I answer any questions?
Anybody else have questions? Yeah, oh, go ahead. Yeah, no. Um, let me see now. Was it you that recommended this might be eligible for the National Register?
The word is potentially eligible. And almost every site is potentially eligible. There's a list of criteria, and I have them here if you'd like to see them. They, it's basically four things that make a site eligible. One is the association of events or significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history. The second is associated with the lives of a person who is significant in our past. The third is the embodied distinctive characteristics type, period, or style that no longer exist. The fourth is, and this is the most important one for a prehistoric site, is has, has yielded or has the likelihood to yield scientific information. Fortunately, scientific information comes from very distinct stratigraphic undisturbed. It's all about context in archaeology. If I may, um, if you take something out of context, its scientific integrity becomes completely diminished and it just becomes an object. Uh, so how it sits in relationship to everything else in the matrix or soil surrounding it is how you interpret it and how it gives its scientific, uh, information.
Okay. So it sounds like the National Register determination would be different than what the, uh, local native population would, attaches a different value on it than what the National Register would?
That's correct, sir. But Native American concerns are always considered on a National Register site.
Okay. Let me see, you, you mentioned that there's, there's artifacts that are scattered throughout the whole parcel?
That's correct, sir. Um, there are lithic debris, chipped stone, as you say, um, that are right in here. Um, very, very few, less than a handful. Again, and that's going down to as far as I could before I hit what we call basement geology, again, the natural, uh, soil that has been undisturbed. Um, the only indication of human bone or glass tradebeads are in this area. They do not show anywhere else on the site. This is considered a historic olive grove. There were two homes built in the late eighteen hundreds. One was situated over here. One was situated over here. The olive trees are in connection with part of what we call the Berkeley House that's set here. Um, there is some historic debris as far as tin cans, um, a couple of tin cans, a couple pieces of bottle glass. Again, the subsurface is less than ten inches, um, for that. So most stuff has either been picked through or washed off depositionally. Um, the only area that shows any type of subsurface, um, depth is, is that area there.
Okay. Let's see, uh, in construction, they'll be disturbing in, what, basically just burying all the lithic scatter that you're talking about, or?
Lithic scatter-
There be collection and cataloging or anything like that that goes on?
Absolutely, sir. The lithic scatter, uh, again, is mostly surface, so, um, it, in a big rain, it could be washed off as well, the stuff that is subsurface. Mr. Cooney, uh, quoted two chips of stone in, uh, a two-square-meter block is actually BLM's definition of a site. It varies depending on whether it's federal, state regulations, and whether it's private, public land, on and on and on. Um, so if we were to find two chips of stone in a two-meter site, we would certainly record those. It wouldn't stop construction entirely. The unanticipated discovery plan that I wrote makes, uh, room for those things. You simply move up a little bit until those have been noted, recorded, and picked up. And it, I must say, uh, in my lab currently is all of the artifacts that were recovered from this. Celebration Community Fellowship feels strongly about giving back any of the prehistoric and protohistoric artifacts, um, back to the tribe.
Okay.
That we currently have in our possession.
Okay. Let me see now. Apparently, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers is, is gonna do an analysis too?
They have completed it, yes, sir.
Huh?
They have completed it. I wrote the report and it's subject to, uh, approval through the Army Corps. And they've, they've, they've agreed and turned it over to SHPO for concurrence.
Okay, so, uh, if in fact, uh, it's determined through that process that this is eligible, then what's the next step?
The next step then, sir, for eligibility is to have it fully recorded. And it goes to the Advisory Council in Washington. And the Advisory Council in Washington and the state SHPO then agree upon concurrence that, yes, they think it's a nationally eligible site.
Okay.
And then it, there are just precautions that are taken. Um, it is highly unlikely, in my professional opinion, that any part of the site would be determined eligible for the National Register. Um, if any part would, it would be the area that we've excluded as an ESA. And the recommendations typically are no construction, which, um, Celebration Community Fellowship has already enacted.
Okay. Who determines the eligibility?
The Advisory Council and California SHPO.
Okay. I think that's getting to the close. I guess the other question I had is, uh, and maybe still kind of stumble over, is the determination was made that we're gonna give a public easement, which allows the public to, uh, beeline right to that site anytime they want. As an archaeologist, uh, does that seem to be the answer to you?
You know, I, I, I've done with, I, I've dealt with thousands of sites. And, and just recently, one called Medicine Rock in Southern California, which is a monolith, a very, a, a single boulder that is stunning and is covered in pictographs, uh, dating from prehistoric times. And they've put a hideous chain link fence around it, which detracts completely, um, from what it was intended to be. The Native Americans don't appreciate it. The archaeologists don't appre-, you know, it, but they felt that was the only way to protect it from vandalism. And in trying to protect it from vandalism, they've actually diminished its, uh, beauty. You could put a s-, a, a fence around it. Um, fences can always be climbed and, and cut through. Unfortunately, for over forty years, this is known to be a looter site. Um, you know, unless you cap that area with concrete or put up a, uh, indestructible fence, I, I doubt that you could keep anybody out. You could put no trespassing signs. You could deed this, uh, deed it with the Celebration Community Fellowship's property and have them responsible for keeping people out. It would be a tough task, no matter who is tasked with trying to keep that area free. It should be, but I don't have an answer as to how to best preserve a site. Um, to keep it park-like is most preferable, to keep it in its natural state. Because even though we don't have any intact burials, we don't even, we have a few human teeth. They cannot be discerned to whether they're prehistoric, historic, protohistoric, whether they're Native American or Anglo. Um, there's very distinctive morphological markers on teeth that tell you if they're Native American or Anglo. Um, those don't appear on these teeth. And then there's great, um, dentition of the teeth is highly marked for prehistoric Native Americans. Again, it's not present on these teeth simply because we don't have enough of the enamel left to make those, uh, tests. So, um, it's unfortunate. But again, as far as protecting the site, I-
I guess the only other option I can think about is if the church maintained ownership, at least if somebody started digging there, they could, uh-
At least they would have the legal authority to, to stop it. That's correct. I know, and if I misspeak, please pastorally correct me, um, they want to keep it a park-like setting and keep it available to the local Native Americans. You know, that they have some access to it. Uh, because we do know something went on there, although nothing is intact. And I strongly do not believe that is the origin. I do believe the origin lies under Highway eighty at this time.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's enough questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If you, yeah, if you can keep, we normally don't give you two cracks at the apple, but I'll do that today if you can keep it two minutes.
And I apologize if I misspoke. Uh, like I said, I'm not a, uh, I'm not an archaeologist. Raymond Benson, who did the first archaeology here, identified the site as How Nosum Sokka and How Nosum Ustu. The, uh, Native American Heritage Commission identified the site as How Nosum Sokka, How Nosum Ustu. And I'm not sure where this other, I know where the other site is. I know all of our sites. Pizian, um-
We don't want to know where it's at.
Okay, I know them all. And I know the names of all our sites. And this is How Nosum Sokka and How Nosum Ustu. And, um, as far as the relative depths of the soil, uh, if you read the letter that, uh, is attached here, uh, that our archaeologist mentioned several concerns about the test pits that were done, they were all placed in pot hunter and looter locations. Um, there are oak trees there, older than three hundred years, uh, only fifteen feet away in the berries. And no attempt to clear berries and get in near the roots of that tree were ever done. All the test pits were dead on top of looter pits. And that's why you found a little piece of asphalt. I was there. And that's why you found, uh, beer cans, pole top, two and a half feet down. That's why you find that. When you find a beer can two and a half feet down, you ought to stop that pit and move it over. And also, I believe there were seven pits-
Two minutes.
Okay. There were seven pits she was supposed to dig. She dug five. Uh, there was opportunity. Please read the attachment in the back. I think it's, uh, very pertinent information and prepared by a PhD archaeologist, registered, certified, whatever they do. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Now, I'm going to, uh, give the project proponent another chance, but you're speaking just from the public?
First Celebration Church.
Is it, is a member or part of the, uh, staff?
Yes, as a member. My name is Charles Riddell. I live in Meta Vista. I've had forty years of construction experience. And, um, that, as we can see around the perimeter, it's heavily forested. And it looks like all of the construction activity that went around building, uh, the overpass, uh, the interchanges and everything else, that that could have been used for a staging area, uh, disturbing quite a bit of that. Uh, you know, finding beer cans and everything else. Uh, I have worked on, uh, Supreme Court's, uh, Indian burial site down in San Jose. And I can respect the Native Americans. And, uh, I know Celebration Church is very credible people, uh, would have a great deal of respect for, uh, the Native Americans. And, uh, that's all I've got to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public that has a comment?
Good morning. My name's Heather Kuklow, and I'm a member of Celebration Community Fellowship. And I just wanted to come up here and show my support for this. It sounds like Celebration and our pastor has done due diligence on what they've needed to do over the past years. And, um, I just hope that you are in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, would, uh, somebody from the, uh, oh, I see a little finger waving there? Okay, well, I gave, I gave other people two cracks at the apple, so I would-
Thank you. I, I do appreciate it, sir. Um, as far as where the, uh, units were placed, the units were not placed directly on top of the looters' pits. They were placed adjacent to the looters' pits. And the reason, um, that no other actual units were dug is because over twenty auger units were dug. And we dig the auger units so that we can predetermine where there is, uh, depth of disturbance, where there are artifacts, uh, and that whatnot. And surrounding the entire ESA area is a litany of auger units that showed there were no further disturbance out and no further artifacts, uh, that penetrated more than about six inches beneath the surface. So-
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, uh, is that it for the public? Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing. And, uh, if somebody from the Celebration Church staff would like to step forward and make comments this time, I'll give you a chance to, give you two cracks at the apple too.
Hi, my name is Cedric Lee. I'm pastor of Celebration Church and, uh, appreciate your time today. Um, we have been, a- as Jerry Haas mentioned, we've been, we purchased this property five years ago. And for five years, we have tried to our very best, um, to work with, uh, Mr. Cooney and, and his claims that have, um, have really been unsubstantiated scientifically. From the very start, um, we were told, after we purchased the property, after, after the close of the property, uh, Mr. Cooney came to my office and, and began to share with me their belief of, um, our property being a significant site. From that very, at, at that first meeting, he said, um, "We would be happy to work with you. And, um, we just want, we just don't want looters to, to, to loot the site. And we just want you to be respectful of, of us." And so we, we said, "Sure, that's not a problem. We'll do everything that we can to, to work with you and to be respectful of, of, you know, your tribe." Um, over the years, that, um, that tone has changed from, "Well, we'd like to work with you" to, "We're gonna do everything in our power to stop you from building your church." Um, he, and, again, I, I find it, I find it interesting that someone who claims to not be an archaeologist, to still try to refute the findings of a qualified, experienced archaeologist. We've had three different cultural studies done of this property. Our church has paid thousands, tens of- tens of thousands of dollars to refute these claims that haven't been proven. We even paid as a church, and when I say paid, when I say that we've paid, I'm talking about the people of our community who are members of our church. They have paid out of their pocket, tens of thousands of dollars, to have scientific proof that there is nothing significant on that property. It talks about the community and, and, and all of this. The bottom line is that our church is the community. They have paid for, to have, to have archaeological studies done because we wanted to know, is this, is this a feasible project or not? Are we imposing upon something legitimate? And so far, none of the studies that we've paid for have proven that there's anything legitimate. And, and even in spite of that, we have still gone the extra mile, the extra step to, to not build on a particular part of that property that we own. And we've also said yes to all, and we've not said no to any mitigation measures whatsoever regarding the project. We've basically said, "If there's something there, then we'll, we'll put it to the test." And so I'm just asking that you, you would be understanding of this five-year process that we've had to go through because of this gentleman and not only the staff of our church, but the church as a whole, the members of the community that have paid out of their pocket to, to get us to this place. And I appreciate that. If you have any questions, I'd answer.
I guess I'm the question asker today. So I guess it seems to me that you're very well aware that as you're moving along and you find an artifact that could further mess up the plans, you might say. And it sounds like the church is willing to take on that responsibility if that happens.
Absolutely.
And then the other question is, you know, I think we need to discuss a little bit, but the place we're calling an easement area, I guess what I'm kind of wondering is, if it seems like there's a way that there's some controls there, would the church be willing to take responsibility for the protection of that site versus having an easement that's open to the public?
I would say that we're open to whatever would be best for all, you know, win-win. We're looking for a win-win solution, you know, for everyone. The easement wasn't our idea. That, that came from the county. And so, you know, I don't know if there's other ways to go about that or if the easement idea is the best option to take. That wasn't our idea. That was, that was suggested to us by the county.
Well, I'm thinking just if you saw somebody digging there, then if it was your property, you-
If it was our property, then we would do anything, we would do everything in our power to, to prevent that from happening.
But if it's a public easement, then all you could do is yell at them, I guess, huh?
Well, that's pretty much all we could do, even with the property, even though, even now, as we own it. For the last five years, people have trespassed on the property. We've put signs up. You know, anytime I drive by there and I see somebody there, I pull over and stop and tell them, "Hey, this is private property. You can't be here. And you can only do so much." So, but like I said, we're looking for a win-win solution.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission to discuss or make a motion or-
I guess I, I have one question for, for staff. If, if we took out the easement condition and just left it with the church, but a condition that they don't build on it or, you know, leave it in an open state?
The issue of the easement is it's a mitigation measure. It could certainly be altered in some way. We'd have to recognize that, of course. The purpose of it is twofold. One is to provide access to the site to a tribe that at this point is not federally recognized. We really didn't have a way to allow access to the property to, for the sake of use of the site that they believe is, is a burial site without having individuals we could name. So it had to be public in some way. The other purpose of the easement is to ensure that nothing is ever constructed on that portion of the property in the future. This church could change hands in decades and a new property owner could determine that, you know, this would be a nice place for a park, maybe put in a volleyball court, something to that effect. So I would say more than any other portion of the mitigations that we proposed for the project, this one gave us the most grief. It wasn't easy to come up with. If, if we can come up with some other form of protection, we would certainly entertain that. But up to this date, we haven't been able to come up with anything better.
That's why I'm asking you to question. I don't have-
Let me just add on to that a little bit.
... proceeding. So in other words, the easement simply allows access, but it wouldn't allow anything to take place on that property, i.e. if anybody were to go on site, start to dig or otherwise affect the status of the property, that the church or anybody could, of course, call law enforcement and, and take whatever actions necessary, just as you could today. Just to emphasize what Jerry says here, we're, it's a little bit of a conundrum in that this tribe is not federally recognized, therefore there is nobody actually to grant an easement to in an official capacity. But I do think that, I would simply say that the easement shall be in a form as approved by the county so that it's, so that we see this, we have the opportunity to, to interface with, with the tribe and with the church in a manner that effectuates the purpose of the easement. And again, it doesn't allow people to go on site and do anything other than just visit the site. And if there's any unauthorized activities, we would ask that that be taken to law enforcement, just like in, in the current situation.
Jeffrey?
Is the, the easement, does it, does it just cover the, the identified site itself or is it an easement across the property?
There are, there are two issues here. One is a public, an exclusive public access easement, which is the seventy-foot radius circle that you see delineated on the map. The other would be a deed restriction that allows individuals to cross the site to access that portion of the site, recognizing that someone from a tribe would not be able to park on the freeway and climb a fence to get in there. They, they more likely would park on Neils Road and cross the parking lot to get over to the site.
And I guess that was what I was getting at is, is when the church is not conducting services and that, they would still have the ability to, to gate off their parking lot and, and close it down to the church. And yet, those wanting to utilize easement can still walk through, kind of?
That's correct. And I think it's important to go back to Ms. Arrington's point. If, if the environmentally sensitive area were demarcated in such a way that it would be very clear that there's something of significance there, it kind of defeats the purpose of trying to protect it. The more attention that's called to it, the more value is diminished. Ultimately, I think what everyone would like to see is that the site and the purpose of that area being left alone is forgotten to everyone except the Native American, most likely descendants.
Anything else? So Scott, were you, I don't know if you were coming up with some new wording or just enlightening us on the existing wording?
Well, in, in condition number thirty-eight, it just says, "Prior to the approval of improvement plans, the ESA shall be recorded as an exclusive public easement." And I just say the easement shall be in a form as approved by the county. In other words, we would see the form of that easement before it's recorded and approve it.
Okay, so that would be some additional words?
Correct. Just added, you know, in a form as approved by the county.
Okay.
So that, that way we'll have an opportunity to see it. And as Jerry said, the purpose here is that not, that activities occur there. The purpose is to protect the site in its, in its current status.
So that's a change to the condition, conditions from staff?
Correct. Condition number thirty-eight.
Okay.
Just adding an easement in a form as approved by the county.
Okay, are there any more comments or discussion points?
If not, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the negative deck, approve the project as presented by staff with the exception of what Scott brought up. Is that good enough?
I think so.
I understand that the motion is to approve the project as recommended by staff with the-
Right.
Findings in the report and conditions with the modification, condition thirty-eight.
That's correct.
And the continued support between the tribe and the church.
Okay, second? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, let me see, let me, before everybody runs away and claps their hands, I need to let you know that this, our decision is appealable and have to make an appeal within ten calendar days here at the planning department. And the fee for an appeal is four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Okay, thank you, folks.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Tim Wagner and I'm currently the chief for the Placer County Building Department and Code Enforcement Operation. And it is with great pleasure that I'm here before you today in this workshop setting to discuss this proposed zoning text amendment. The ZTA pertains to the enforcement article of the Placer County Zoning Ordinance, which conveys the regulations and standards by which land use enforcement is administered today. Specifically, the proposal before you is to clarify existing enforcement sections of the Placer County Zoning Ordinance and to establish and the establishment of an administrative citation and hearing process. While at the onset, this appears to be a method for creating and collecting fines for the violation of land use regulations, although this is anything but the intent of this ZTA proposal today. As chief of the county's code enforcement operation, I have firsthand experience with today's enforcement complications. And while finding surrounding communities are experiencing success with similar administrative citation processes, well, this is what has compelled me to come before you today. I tell you, I reviewed the prior proposals that have been before this commission from two thousand and six and I understand we've had a commission change, that many of you were not here in two thousand and six in your current capacities. But I have reviewed those and I want to assure you that major adjustments have been brought to that original proposal in, in addressing the concerns and bringing back the much-desired checks and balances. Three primary areas that we've addressed in there are providing protection to the public by not engaging the officer in the fine assessment process, removing the fee cap to allow the hearing officer or panel to determine the proper fine amount or a stay of penalty which may be ordered at the onset of compliance, and finally, an avenue for appeal. With that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to begin with a brief presentation and really open this up at this point for myself for questions.
Okay.
Again, in February two thousand and six, this was brought before the commission and at that point in time was denied and was asked to go back for clarification and further review. In November of two thousand and six, we do find this was on the agenda, but no action was taken at that point in time and, and no further action had been, has continued at that point until today. Again, we have a proposal modification for you today, as I've addressed. Really, the discussion is, is what's the proposal's intent? We really clarified existing texts to understand what these administration and enforcement procedures are, are about and to provide the effective enforcement tool of Article seventeen point sixty-two, which is the enforcing provisions creating this administrative citation process. What's the purpose today? Well, we wanted to, we want to have some discussions with you. We're trying to determine what is the appropriate hearing body? Is an individual the best? Is a, is a panel the best? In, in review of surrounding communities, we find that both are in play. And we're really looking forward to the commission to help guide us in that of what you think our community today is looking forward to. A fine discussion. I've noted, and you might find in here, we have a one, five hundred and thousand dollar. I'm actually going to recommend we amend that to a one hundred, two hundred and five hundred dollar, actually decreasing what the proposal is before you today. And that's aligned with what we're finding with other communities in our area. Last, the appeal process. Today, we have the appeal process, only discussing that the appeal is of the fine that's been assessed by the hearing officer or panel and not to the matters of fact. And again, the hearing, the appeal would come before this commission itself to look at if the fine is appropriate for the type of violation and how it's been portrayed. And the, the hearing process in itself, we'd be glad to have a discussion with you about what that process is, how we establish that, if you, if you like to understand the logistics of those. And of course, anything else the commission might have. Well, that's really it. That's really it. I told you I'd be quick. I have some notes here as well if you, if you have questions for me. But other than that, we find this is, again, working in other communities around us, everywhere from Lincoln, Nevada County recently adopted an administrative citation process this last February, El Dorado County, and they've all provided us, this has been the best enforcement tool at not only providing the balance in the community, but gaining compliance for the matters before them. So with that, I just open it up to you. Mr. George Rososco has also helped me. He's with the planning department in crafting on this. And we're both here to answer any technical or other questions you might have.
Okay, questions?
Questions. Not too long ago, we had an issue with, with a property owner had too many vehicles on his property that came before the commission. How would this change that? How would this have benefited that process?
I think quite substantially. As you might know, today, we have yet to resolve that issue. What we are, would do in this situation would be issuing a citation as opposed to an abatement process. Issuing a citation or rather going before the judicial process would be to go before a hearing body who would use appropriate, as I would term them, fine carrots, to compel the property owner to take action. That might be, "Sir, today, should this property or these cars not be remedied to bring them back into compliance? Come before me in sixty more days and should we not find that that has been remedied? You are subject to a hundred dollars a day for sixty days and so forth, a hundred dollars a day, whatever the hearing officer might find appropriate." So we find in our study that actually this compelling component is actually driving folks to comply. There is the one percenters and this, this process, we might find the same actually with this Colfax issue.
I was gonna say, if he thumbed his nose at the ordinance in the first place, he's gonna thumb his nose at your fines and then you're heading back to the courtroom anyway?
That, that might be possible. And this, this is not to, we are attempting to add tools to our toolbox and understand that it could be a varying degree of those tools to help us get to the end result. And in not all cases will, will this be the end-all, be-all. So you're right, in this case, with the Colfax issue, we could find this. But we do note that when people find they have to come before a, a particular hearing body, there's a, we raise the bar a bit for them. And they understand that there's some seriousness involved in this, where this is, at this point, this particular issue, it seems that the seriousness didn't come until he had to stand before this commission.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to phrase this. What, what kind of penalty, not say penalty, let's say that, that indeed some violation takes place and a penalty is assessed and as Jeff says, it's ignored. What remedy do we have?
The current remedy?
No, under this process. If you fine five hundred bucks and he doesn't pay, what happens?
Absolutely. Well, we go through, then we would go through a lien process, actually, and there would be some measure of collection of trying to get them to, to compel them to make that payment. You're correct, that there would be a collection component as well as then we would go levy a lien against the property and try to collect that. Scott Finley, our county counsel, might be able to help me further on that. Scott Finley, our county counsel, might be able to help me further on that, but Scott is, that's correct that we would.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind here is this is an alternative to the current enforcement options that the county has. It's not intended to substitute for them and it would be used in conjunction, so under the present circumstances, a citation only gets you a fine. One of the concerns was, we weren't even getting into court with the citations, so we weren't getting the attention of the people who were in violation. The idea here is to set up a process where we get their attention. If that doesn't get their attention, we may have to fall back on our existing enforcement options, which are the ones you already have. So, so in other words, this process won't create, won't solve that problem. If they're gonna ignore us, they're gonna ignore us. The idea here is to try and get their attention more quickly and not have to go through the convoluted nuisance abatement process we currently have.
So in the steps, you're just, this is something that's extra, so say, maybe, Tim, sort of just like walk us through a scenario where this would be used, you know, versus, and then maybe walk us through the same scenario paralleling with the existing so we can see or understand exactly, okay, how does this really streamline it?
Sure, sure. So for example, we have a, we've notified an individual through our three step process that they have a violation on their site. They don't remedy that violation within the timelines that are outlined for them. Currently, we would issue them a citation. They would go before, and the intent of the citation is to get their attention, that there's some seriousness to this matter. We'd get them then in front of a judge, a superior court, a referee, and go through what we typically find a trial process. But the difficulty with that is, as Mr. Finley has briefly touched on, is we're finding and have studied this for some time, a good majority of our cases that go before the judicial process are, are carried forward, they're continued, the matters are convoluted, we find these can be continued for many years. We had an issue down in the Granite Bay area recently where we had a cargo container in an area, residential area, that wasn't deemed to be appropriate, it wasn't residential in character, there were some other anomalies going on in this. It took us more than two years of going through the courts before we even got to trial and the frustration with the reporting parties and the community and the officer time and my staff's resources that it takes to accomplish these became unmeasurable, it was, it's huge. With this process, what we would do at the onset is to get them before a knowledgeable body within a reasonably expeditious timeline, such as the next hearing that becomes, that comes, the next hearing date that comes forward, not set forward a year or six months or an opportunity to be continued, but to actually then be issued a citation that advises of your hearing date, compels you to come before the hearing body or hearing officer, states your case, and we don't have this continuation process except for if the hearing officer deems, which I would, would find appropriate, is, tell you what, we might negotiate here a fact of a compliance timeline that we both can reasonably understand with then a, an agreement almost between the, the person who's having the concerns and the property owners having the concerns and the hearing officer that should they come back before them in this described time period, thirty or sixty days, if this is not taken care of, here is what you will be subject to and laying that forward. So it removes the, the process that happened in the court systems of continuances, our inability as staff in this particular area, I mentioned in Granite Bay, there were, there were concerns that, that there were also activities that were happening that were impacting a stream bed and we were concerned about potential flooding for upstream or downstream residents because of what had happened here and the courts would not listen to this and said, well, we'll worry about that when we get to the rainy season. Well, we went through two rainy seasons and the court's still yet to hear that. So our frustrations are in the matter that these are elongated, stretched out without even understanding the county, the community's concerns and getting this into a timeline that is fitting for the violation. This allows us to do every bit of that. Is that clear enough for you?
Yeah, it's more like go to arbitration first before you go to court.
Very much so.
Yeah.
And we still have the court judicial process available to us if we find this didn't work. We still have the ability to abate if we find this doesn't work, but in our studies, this is the trend in California. It's certainly the trend in our region and I have at least ten communities around me where the code enforcement teams have said, the efficiencies, the cost effectiveness, compliance have gone, compliance has gone through the roof. We've seen, we've seen this turn around to, we're getting people to comply almost immediately because they understand that there's not a laborious process that they go through, that they come before somebody who's knowledgeable, that can make appropriate decisions and, and set forth the path to gain compliance.
See, you have the sheriff's department here listed as, as one of the, the code officers, I guess, the long glasses on, but shall be the duty of the Placer County Sheriff Agency Director and so on and so forth. Is the sheriff's department on board with getting in the middle of code enforcement on top of everything else they're doing?
Well, actually, they're, they're quite involved with my officers today. We go into many hostile environments, as you might imagine, and we have a great working relationship with them. This term sheriff has not been, it's not an addition to this text, it's, it's always been in our enforcing procedures, so we're not asking for an addition to this. The sheriff's not taking on any task today that they haven't taken on in the past. I have had no feedback either way negatively or positively about this process from the sheriff's department and again, we're not making a change to anything with, with our current processes.
Okay, I'll ask a question. Yeah, I was a little bit confused by hearing office, officer, or no, a hearing body and a hearing officer and it kind of sounded like the hearing officer might have been, might be selected? Or is that really a position in the planning department or, who is a hearing officer? And what's the qualifications and how do you decide who gets to be one?
Great question. We've left that up actually to the agency director to determine, to determine that, although we've done some study and we're finding, we have to be cautious. We can't, it's the current appearance that it cannot be internal staff. In other words, we can't have the fox watching the hen house and we understand that and actually I feel that's appropriate and what we're trying to do is bring back the balance to the community. So in my discussions with council and, and as our review is, is really we're looking at this, it's likely to be a panel of folks, three people could be, that's why we've said body here, could be three people that are selected from outside that would sit on this that are not employees of the county and, and should it be an individual as the hearing officer, we would look for those same type of solutions, somebody outside of the county. We're finding there's a state of California actually hearing office, we could employ a hearing officer through that, can be somewhat pricey, those are typically retired judges that do these type of activities, but more so, we're looking maybe for the attorney group around locally, a retired attorney who has some specialization in, in land use, has a land use background, again, knows our region, knows our culture and can still measure out and weigh the land use issues in an expedited fashion so we don't get into the fact of law complications that we're seeing today with the judicial process as well.
Let me just jump in there a little bit, Tim. This is not a new concept, obviously, to, to California and other jurisdictions, but usually what you do is you, you set up a, you have essentially a list of qualified hearing officers and as matters come up, you just roll through the list and they'd be, the list would be prepared, they'd be all vetted in advance and they'd be all, typically they can be attorneys, but they can also be other, other individuals who have, who have knowledge that would be appropriate in order to determine the facts here. As Tim points out, the point here is they can't be associated with the county, just like a judge exercises his or her independent judgment, this hearing officer has to exercise his or her independent judgment and as between a hearing body and a hearing officer, the purpose of a hearing officer is to get somebody in place quickly. When you have a body, you're talking three individuals, first you gotta find them, then you gotta get them together and then you gotta go to a hearing. So a hearing officer is certainly the most efficient way to do this and that would all be set up in advance, but it wouldn't be, for example, Paul hearing an administrative citation brought, brought forward by somebody within code enforcement.
Okay, so we're doing a hearing officer in lieu of a hearing body.
Well, I was kind of looking for a direction that, from the commission today is what, what you felt was most appropriate, as Scott has mentioned, we, hearing officer would be the path of least resistance that we could get on board quite quickly and have a rotation list. A body or a panel would be a little more complicated, finding those folks with the background and then the rotation and those things would be a little more complicated, but understand that that might be what our community is asking for, is not just one individual to make these analyses, is actually to have a group or a body of folks who could independently come to terms about what's going on.
Well, a hearing officer, much like a zoning administrator, there's an appeal opportunity. I guess it sounds like it comes to the planning commission after, if there's an appeal?
Although the appeal is not about the facts, it would be only for the fine that would be assessed, so if the hearing officer were to find that the violation is true and accurate and would assess a five hundred dollar fine, the person felt that was inequitable, they could appeal the five hundred dollar fine to this commission, the commission they could look and say, well, based on this, we're, we're good with this fine or reduce it if they find them.
And, and again, let me just emphasize why that was, is that was specifically designed so that you didn't have a hearing de novo before the planning commission. There's no point in having a hearing officer hear a matter if it immediately gets appealed to the planning commission on all the facts and you rehear the whole, the whole situation. Again, going to court, the judge makes the determination, that's the end of the issue unless they appeal to the superior court judge. So the idea here was to try and get things moving quickly and if the fine was felt to be too high, there was an avenue to appeal that, but the facts would be determined by the hearing officer.
Okay.
I, I guess, one of the questions, because you're, you're talking about the fine, but so say it's an abatement issue, somebody's got his car's trash, whatever it is out there, go out there, he doesn't do it in the time, you cite him five hundred dollars. He has the right to appeal to us the five hundred, but he's still under an obligation to pay whatever that problem is and if he doesn't do that, then it goes to the judge after that and then after, after that point and the county's gonna actually pay for the cleanup and stuff, then that's when it would come back to us.
Well.
Like it sort of does now, is my understanding?
Well, the abatement process does come before the commission. What, yes, that means, so if we're assessed a five hundred dollar fine to do this cleanup at that point in time, didn't do it, they wanted to appeal, the five hundred dollars would come before this commission, they did that, you founds five hundred stays, they still don't clean up, our process then would be, take them to the Superior Court of California, see if we find a different solution there, not, would not likely be my next choice, would probably be, well, we need to abate this, the community's at a point of uneasiness and we need to remedy this for the community and so that abatement process would come back before this commission. So you could see dual processes, actually, we could go through all four processes, don't have the intent of doing that, we would look for which one, again, trying to be compliance driven, which one is gonna gain compliance based on the situation that we have at hand.
Sounds like it would be infrequent that you would take it to a superior court judge?
We actually prefer to shift this, to, to shift entirely away from the court systems and go to, to this and utilize this as our first stance. It works hand in hand with our voluntary compliance process, gives them another, another opportunity to be heard, to understand what the situation is. I have to be honest with you, I, I worked for about ten years in Wichita, Kansas as a code enforcement officer out there when I, when I began my career. We started out in the court systems. I found this exact thing as an officer and going before the traffic courts, which these typically are heard, the judges have a knowledge base of traffic laws and not land use typically and it was very complicated, I find that same example here. Soon as we shift over to what I would call a night court setting, when folks were then provided a, an opportunity to come, when they could not have to take time off work or these things were more free, they felt, they, these folks who would typically evade the court system processes were more than happy then to come in, they felt like they were heard, there were reasonable findings and solutions and typically an additional compliance segment out there of thirty more days, sixty more days, a hundred and eighty days, you need to do this or you come before me, this is what will happen. Folks understood very clearly on plain English terms and not through some court dictation where they're confused about the terms and what's happening before them. So it was really one-on-one, it worked very well. I found even, well, nearly twenty years ago now when we, when I was out there, that it worked back then, as I'm hearing this in California, the exact same fines are coming true. The public feels much more settled, staff feels much more settled, things are moving through clearly, people understand what the consequence is and honestly, in, in our studies, what they, what we're finding is the, the initial stage of this is the most important because then, as we know now, the word out there is let them take you to court, good luck years down the road. We have ten and greater, a year old cases that we have that we can't get remedied to. They're stalled in the courts, they're stalled at our DA's office because as we understand that these aren't, many times aren't of issues of imminent nature where what we might find the DA dealing with, so they have to prioritize. So we're really trying to put this in the right setting.
Okay, let me see if I can state it back so that we're all clear on this, or at least partially, partially clear. So what you're saying is we have an administrative process here whereby somebody that's having a problem with their property, rather than jumping right into an abatement type setting, you'll use a, a hearing, an administrative hearing and assess a fine and then, then hopefully the situation is solved at that point. If the person that's causing the problem elects to continue causing the problem, they'll have a lien against their property and if they continue from that point, then you'll just go back to the original abatement process.
Yes, using that as more of the, the last practice if we need to, because as you, as you found with abatement that you heard a couple of months ago, they're very complex.
Okay, so, so if we as a commission get involved in this and after the first step, if they affect, in fact, want to appeal the fine, then we will hear the fine and that's the only discretion that we'll have. Then beyond that, when it gets into abatement process, if it comes back to us, then we're back to our traditional role that we played in the past.
That's right.
So I, at least that's where I'm hearing it. I guess the question that seems like is on the floor and if somebody would like to weigh in on it is this idea, should we have a hearing body of three or a hearing officer of one or a combination therefore, I guess, would be, and so I guess what, what's the feedback the commission would like to give on that?
Mine, I, I think just, just one person, just.
This shouldn't, this shouldn't guide your determination, but keep in mind, those costs will be paid for by the county. You can't charge the person who's in violation for the cost of the hearing officer. So one versus three means one person versus three persons you're paying on hearing.
Yes. Anybody else wanna?
Yeah, just a question, how do you see this as a separate hearing every thirty days or something like this?
Well, I think at the onset, we would probably have a monthly hearing date, find something that's reasonable that, that fits in, but as this evolves, we could find more frequently or less frequently depending on what occurs. In, in our studies, we're finding that actually probably to find less frequently because upon the issue of the citation, you get remedy, they, there's compliance. So yes, initially, we might find that this is a little more frequent, but we'll see, see where we go from there and really it's gonna be a balance.
Could we get some kind of feedback through? You have to say six months or eight, how this is working?
Absolutely.
That'd be a good idea. And a follow-up to your quest question, Jeff, that item we had that you talked about, whatever happened though? For all those cars were on that property?
Well, I, I wish the officer was here. I believe we're down to thirteen of the twenty cars. He was effective in evading our process servers. We've had multiple process servers attempting to find this gentleman. We have effectively served him and now he is, property is in default and this is likely to be turned over. And this is likely to be turned over to another party where we would have to start the abatement process over. So it's part of the complexities of the abatement, which we try to stay away from. So to answer your question, we are nearly halfway there, three from halfway. But we don't see this anytime soon until we can get this property either out of the default or the bank recovers it and then we'll have some discussions with the bank about what's going on out here.
Thank you.
Betcha. Okay. I'm not hearing any objection to going with one hearing officer?
Well, I'm talking about that right now.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Is that we're gonna have to be, I think, pretty careful on how we choose this person. I think that's gonna be a lot.
I don't think we're gonna do that.
That's not our.
I know, me and us, as the county, however, that is, how that person is determined, I think, is gonna be one of the crux of the matter.
I guess what I was hearing Scott say is that they will, I guess, once this is approved by supervisors, they'll go through a process of identifying people that have legal or land use background and vet the list.
I would like to caution, say, I would try to keep those kind of people out of it right now. They're associated with the judicial system.
Hang your mic full on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of the people who are already involved with the area that we're having a problem with, with delays and things like this. So that if somebody from the outside or what could be considered outside that isn't part of an administration or a legal system, might be more acceptable to the general public. That's one comment.
I think that's what they're talking about.
Yeah, but I'm saying that the general public would probably be more acceptable to somebody who didn't have a legal background because they already associate all the delays and things with attorneys and bureaucrats.
Okay.
I guess my comment to that, minor though, is sometimes when you're, have something like that, that come up, you want to make sure the person you're talking to is knowledgeable enough. And whether you like attorneys, don't like attorneys and stuff, the tendency is, is there, you probably respect what they're saying versus if I was sitting up there and, you know, not knowledgeable and stuff. Because then you have an officer and you have the person and it's okay, can I sway him because he doesn't really have enough of the legal.
I have the opposite feeling, to be honest with you, Ken, I think there's probably more respect for somebody like me talking to somebody like that as opposed to an attorney in between with this kind of a thought. I think we might get more compliance from people who are creating the problem from the neighbor that looks just like him and works like him and acts like him as opposed to somebody who's been associated with the legal system that's always been, you know, concerned with delays and, you know, legalese and things like that. A little more plain speak right to the person might be more acceptable to the general public, that's all I'm thinking. If I may, Mr. You telling them what to do as opposed to Scott telling them what to do, he may actually get more respect from you.
What do the other counties do, Tim?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there's a blend, actually. We're seeing a variety of things. I think it's our minimum qualifications that we place in trying to look for a fit. Because as we know, even though you might have qualifications, fit can be the most important factor. We can many times train those other technical components. So I think in how we structure that's the most important, and that's really why we left it at the agency director's level is understanding all of the departments under the agency, our function, really how those operate. And we have one person at the top, our agency director, Michael Johnson, today, who understands how all these work and then would find a fit, maybe it is an attorney, maybe it isn't, who would be able to navigate and understand these issues. Because Commissioner Gray, we are concerned as well that, of that exact issue of we get back into the legalese, the process of the judicial system and this is exactly what we're trying to unravel. So we would have to be cautious about that.
Anybody else want to weigh in on anything?
I just have one other question in general.
See, Mickey?
Yeah.
Are you okay with one versus three?
I think so, I think, yes. I mean, basically what we're trying to do is trying to make something, as I understand it, that works a little faster, a little clearer, a little cleaner than the judicial system, which for its, you know, for whatever reasons, may not be quite as fast as a lot of people would like. And so, yes, one, I think I could go with. The only other question I have in this concerns, I guess, just a kind of a general philosophy concerning somebody who's elected as a first, somebody who's hired. Mr. Johnson is a hired employee, appointing somebody who's gonna basically cost somebody else money. If we had some way to have, in some regard, somebody elected who basically makes that appointment or something like that, it might sit better with a lot of people. Same kind of thing that happens in the federal government when some person's appointed to a board that can turn around and find somebody a million dollars. The only way he got there is because somebody else, you know, hired him. It's.
That's how philosophical I mean. Stay away from that.
Well, maybe Scott could.
Unfortunately, there really isn't a, an elected official that would act in that role. As Tim points out, the reason we have the CEDR director doing it is that way you can set up, have somebody oversees the qualified list who is familiar with all of the requirements of that position. And it may be, it may be a retired building inspector that would be qualified to do that, not necessarily an attorney. But you would want to have somebody who has some familiarity with both the process and some of the circumstances within the county that you face.
Right, well, I mean, you know, most of these kind of code enforcement problems, I find most people with just regular common sense could handle most of the technical problems that are coming at this level. What I'm concerned more about is the idea that somebody, a hired person is appointing somebody to sit here. I'm thinking if the board approves, for example, the list that somebody else puts together, then the public has the idea that this is a person who is somehow representative of them as opposed to a bureaucrat hired by the county. That's my concern.
This is a workshop, so I think what we can do is take that into account and as we get the, this is a workshop, so we can take that issue into account.
Right, well, that's all I'm bringing it up for.
And see whether there's some alternative and give that some consideration.
I don't think it would hurt things to have the board approve the list.
Yeah. Well, it just gives the general public the idea, I think, that, you know, basically their vote is going through the process to have somebody who can intern.
The liturgy system kind of thing.
I do believe we would have to navigate the office of a hearing officer if we might navigate through the board with this kind of a discussion. There are different statutes that would apply if we were actually, actually.
As Tim is saying, there is a process for the board to actually appoint a hearing officer. But we're really not looking for a hearing officer here, what we're looking for is a panel, so as the need arises, you can have more than one individual, so you don't have the same person. One of the things that people object to is somebody who relies upon the county for his income deciding things that the county brings to him. So we're trying to get away from that and have somebody who's independent from the county.
Well, but still having, whether it's Michael, Paul, Tim, George, somebody that goes out and gets all these names from outside of county employees that potentially could do this. And then basically just submitting that on, I think supervisors' agenda, that they would just, yes, we approve that. I mean, is that something that goes outside of that? Because I think, is that what you're sort of?
Well, yeah, I'm kind of into the idea that rather than having somebody be appointed by somebody who's hired, at least have the perception that the voting public is making some input into this person who's turning around impacting them.
Yeah, and I think we can take that into account because there's already qualified lists for various professionals that are approved by the board.
Yeah, it might be, you know, April County or something, but I.
You could even have each district supervisor suggest three people from their district, something like that.
Yes.
So that doesn't become basically you guys picking somebody, but the perception of an elected official.
If the director makes up a list, if it's approved by supervisors, then that would be the same thing, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, where it doesn't have to.
Understood, understood. And the, we were trying to steer away from the inference that, again, the fox is watching the hen house here and we'd want to be careful of that. And we had discussed if it were to be a panel, that exact type of a process would be talk to the board of supervisors, have them push forward folks that they would recommend to represent and move forward with that with one person, that's a little difficult. But the other thing too is if, we have to be, the reason I bring up this hearing office is we do have to be careful because, and Scott, please correct me where I go wrong here, but there is some law out there that says if you do create this office, it must be an attorney and they must have five years of practice. It gets pretty, we dive back into this, so we need to be careful to separate this, that this isn't a judicial setting and we're trying to stay away from that.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking, is that's what we're trying to avoid.
Well, let us study, let us study what other communities, because really, City of Lincoln's, Auburn, Nevada County, Eldorado County, many of us around us are doing this, Citrus Heights, and many of them are already doing this, Roseville. Let us see what they do and how they came about with who represents them and what that process is and be glad to present that before you.
Yeah, well, you could create an annual list, rather than having a hearing body, you could create a annual list of qualified hearing officers. And annually, the board supervisors could approve that list and then.
Just rotate through that.
Rotate through it. Let me see, did you have any other questions you wanted us to beat up on?
Yeah, I just have just a couple of quick things that like I heard come up, especially from Commissioner Gray with regard to how this would actually work. And one of the things that I don't think is clear, and Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, but the 100, 200 and 500 dollar fines, the way it would work in practice is that's a fine that can be levied each day for each violation. Okay, and the way you get compliance, because Ben Brenner, who's a code enforcement officer, has been talking to other jurisdictions about it, is that you use a fine that's appropriate for the violation. For instance, you wouldn't necessarily find them immediately when they came before the panel. You figure out what the violation was, you talk to them about a reasonable timeframe. For instance, they have five junked cars that need to go. They say, you know, that's $5,000, that's gonna take me six months because I can do like one car a month. And so you would probably agree to a six-month timeframe. But you would tell them in six months, you come back before this body and it's gonna cost you $5,000 to take those cars off. But when you come back before us, we have the ability to fine you $5,500. So there's no benefit to not doing what you agreed to because it's gonna cost you more when you come back. The review that we've done seems to suggest that when you start applying fines like that, that compliance goes to like 90, 95%. And it's not, and it's not that we want to collect a fine because the whole goal is not to collect the money, the whole goal is to get compliance. So what would happen is in that time period, that six months, if the officer goes out and those cars are gone, that person will never come back before that hearing body. We'd give them an update, we'd say, they did what they said they were gonna do, they're not coming back before you, we took them off the agenda.
Yes, oh, okay, George, so that way if they come, person comes before you, so I cited for the five cars.
Oh, we're gonna hit you hard for all the years.
So I come before you and you say, okay, what's a reasonable time, Ken, that you can get rid of the cars?
Right, because we're very concerned, yeah.
Yeah, give me 60 days, I can get rid of them. And, because you're saying, okay, Ken, it's 61 days, it's $500 a day from that point on till you get rid of all those cars.
That's a lot of money, I wouldn't suggest that much.
Well, all I'm saying, that's, that's the thing that's gonna get me to do it. So it's not costing me anything, so I can talk to you and maybe the code enforcement says, hey, you've got the standard 30 days to get rid of the cars.
Right.
I can't do it now.
Right, you can't.
Before you.
And you'll find that the code enforcement division is extremely reasonable. If you show up and talk to us, we'll give you as much time as you need as long as you're making progress and it's not a health and safety issue. So the real reason of a fine is to place just a little bit more than what it would cost you to fix it. So there's no benefit to not doing it. So the real success would be, is if we implement this and we collect one, maybe two fines, and then people start to comply. And the other thing that Commissioner Gray brought up, that Tim and I have talked about extensively and we're very concerned about, is the lack of a check and balance on staff. We're very concerned about who the hearing body is or who the hearing panel is. I grew up in this county, I would venture to say at some point in time, someone that I know, not a family member probably, but someone that I know will wind up before this panel or hearing officer, and I want them to have a fair shake. I want, I want an independent third party to say, look, staff has been completely reasonable and here's what's gonna happen. Or staff is completely out of line and it will put a check on us. So we're very concerned about that and I know because Tim and I have talked about it extensively, that whatever we bring back to you, whether it's a hearing panel, a hearing body, will be one that will take away any perception that they're tied in with the county. I mean, we've talked about all sorts of things about from panels appointed by the legislative body, supervisors. Jurisdictions are different, some of them have hearing officers, some of them actually have panels. Roseville has a panel that has, I think, an ex-CHP who may or may not be a good choice because you might get into that law enforcement bent, a fireman, people like that. They don't usually have attorneys or judges. Now, we have to look into it, but whatever comes back will not have the perception that they are in any way controlled by the county or staff, is very concerned about that. Do you have any questions?
So you guys are gonna try to check a couple of the outfits around us to see how they're doing it?
We already have, we've already, we've already talked to most of them and we have a sense, although we don't have details. Yeah, we will dive a little more into their section process and those type of things. I'm hearing that likely you're more interested in a single hearing officer than the panel or body. And so we'll look at that, we'll also study the body or the panel because we might find in there through discussion as well that maybe there's something that you would have interest. One of the things I wanted to touch on here is there's a, when I started with the county more than three years ago here, I was commissioned by John Marin to write a procedures manual for code enforcement. How do we go about things, change our culture, Tim, change the way we go about this. What we've done is stepped forward with what we call voluntary compliance process. It's what George talked about, the officers don't go out today and say, you've got 30 days to clean that up. They come out and say, typically it's 30 days, but boy, you have a big mess here, when do you think you can do it? This is the psychological advantage that we're finding that this hearing process does as well. If I commit to you as a person that I'm going to do something in a timeframe, there's a magical thing that happens to us. We then hold ourselves to what we've said because we want to be good people. When somebody tells us to do something, well, the complications come in whether I agree with that or whether I don't agree with that. So we find not only at the hearing officer level or the code enforcement officer level, but at this hearing level as well, is when you can come before somebody and say, I will clean this up in 60 days, a good majority of the time they do. And the fine never even comes into play.
Okay, that said, that said for you guys?
Yeah, unless you have any questions. So if I might, just to, it looks like you would like, obviously, something with a six-month feedback about how this process goes once we implement. You're interested in one hearing officer and we'll study that a little more and what the minimum qualifications in other communities are. And then the only last thing I'd like to is, are you okay with the way the fines are written today at the 1, 5 and 1,000? Or are you, would you like me to proceed forward with this 100, 200, 500 that I'm suggesting, I think, is a balanced approach that's in line with other communities?
If it's a daily fine, yeah, that's.
Well, they can accumulate daily, yes, and it depends on how big of a hammer you want the hearing officer.
Let's be a little clear, though.
They still grow fast.
Excuse me, but I don't want to imply that it's daily. The fines are based upon what's in the citation, so you have to be cited for it. So it depends on how the thing, how it gets charged. So the hearing officer isn't gonna have the power to say, I'm gonna continue to fine you $500 a day until you clean it up. It's gonna be based upon what comes before him, he suspends the fine and then if it's cleaned up, they don't have to pay it.
Yeah.
So, so it depends on how it's charged, I just want to make clear on that. And the reason I think that it wasn't what it is now, which I think is 100, 200, 1,000, is wanted to have that $1,000 out there. So if you needed to because they continued to ignore you, you could get the largest hammer possible. Doesn't mean it has to be imposed, it just allows it to be imposed.
So you could have 100, 200, 500 and 1,000?
Sure, certainly could, yeah.
Yeah. With that, you done?
I'm done. So we will come back, we have to, we're gonna come back with an actual proposal, ask you for a recommendation for the board because the board has to adopt it. So this is just a workshop, we wanted to see what you're thinking, I think you have a good idea. Think you have a good idea and then we'll be back with those changes.
Any idea when?
Soon.
Yes. We'll be hoping for it.
I mean, what are we talking about, like?
It's 30 days?
As soon as possible.
We'll go on an extra available agenda.
Yeah. Because we would like to go.
Well, I'd like to see you back here within 60 days, personally.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, meetings closed.
You know, I'd like to add something to our agendas. We close with.